Bloomfield Township Planning Commission to order. Welcome everybody here and online and across the, around the world to, Wolf Blitzer here.
Okay.
To the February 20th meeting of the Bloomfield Township Planning Commission. Just an explanation of what we are. We're a seven-member body. We're appointed by the Board of Trustees per the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. And it's a recommending body only. Everything goes from here, goes to the Board of Trustees to make the final decision. On tonight's agenda, we have one item, a public hearing to consider proposed amendments to the ordinance for mechanical and electrical equipment and pergolas and fountains. And so, an affirmative vote of at least four members of this board are necessary to move things forward. And so, the first thing, we have attendance, we have a quorum, so we can conduct business. We need four people, and we have that. And you all got the minutes from last, the last meeting, and you had an opportunity to go over them. Is there any, are there any changes, additions, corrections, comments? We're seeing on the motion then to approve them?
Moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. A public comment. I don't see anybody here, so we'll close that portion. Okay. The public hearing. To, Andrea, you gonna, you gonna present this one? Oh, okay. I saw you over there. All right. Patty?
She's working the high-tech machinery over here.
Okay.
So, as we introduced this last month, we have two ordinances that are in front of you, addressing provisions within our zoning ordinance. So, there's, they're proposed zoning ordinance amendments. The first one has to do with allowing for some further elements to be permitted by right on our patios. And if you recall, we, back in 2019, that we amended our ordinance to allow, when those patios are immediately adjacent to a residence, that they can include various elements within the patio itself, as long as it complied with setback provisions, where we were allowing kitchenettes and barbecues and seat walls and so forth. Well, we're continuing on that theme, if you will, to see, have there been other examples that our zoning board of appeals has been reviewing and acting upon and granting that are those same type of elements that are on our patios that are immediately adjacent to the residence? So, we came up with two examples. One is pergolas. You know, so a pergola, we are suggesting is going to be defined, so that it is intended to be, let me just get my definition here. An open-sided trellis-style structure that includes columns and open horizontal roof beams and not a solid roof structure like a canopy or gazebo. So, we've had numerous pergolas that have come before the zoning board of appeals off of a rear patio. The criteria that's being presented, you know, identifies that it cannot exceed 14 feet in height, which is consistent with our maximum height of accessory structure, and that it be screened from view by evergreen plantings. And so, here is an example of a plan that actually went before the zoning board of appeals. So, we have, highlighted in the navy blue is the outline of a pergola. It's immediately adjacent to the outline of the rear residence. And there's landscaping that's presented that would be screening from public view. So, it's 16 feet from the property lines, it's evergreen screening, it's adjacent to the principal residence, and it's in this rear patio immediately adjacent to the residence. So, this would be an example that upon submission of a building permit application, the plan reviewer would look at this, confirm that it complied with the zoning ordinance, and this would require a permit for inspection and compliance with the building codes, but it would not necessitate an application before the zoning board of appeals. The second element within this patio, and we've had several that have come before the zoning board of appeals, are these patio fountains, where it's lower profile, we're defining this as four feet in height, that's consistent with the other elements that are part of the patio that we previously approved, which are those seat walls or barbecues and kitchenettes and so forth. And as long as it's incorporated within the patio that's immediately adjacent to the residence and is screened from view by evergreen plantings, this would be an element that, if it was shown on the site plan and was presented to the building department, we would confirm that it complied with these criteria. That would be in the rear yard, it's adjacent, on the patio that's adjacent to the residence, that the 16-foot side yard setbacks are being met, and that there's evergreen plantings for, as part of a landscape plan. So, this, this provision is separate from the following, which is ordinance 676. And this is primarily addressing ground-mounted mechanical and electrical equipment. And our proposal is to remove the provisions that we currently have under our ordinance relating to these elements from the accessory structure segment or section of our zoning ordinance and putting it into our site standard. This would allow units to comply by right within the criteria of our ordinance and not necessarily seek a variance before the ZBA or approval from the ZBA. So, in this particular section, you'll see that we've crossed out the existing language, and we've introduced this new separate section called ground-mounted mechanicals in our site standards. And so, the ground-mounted mechanicals, we're, we looked at the history of the zoning board of appeals acting upon and approving ground-mounted mechanicals in the side yard. In fact, even researched some of our adjacent communities and how they've addressed these ground-mounted mechanicals in their side yards, and more specifically, because that's more of a common application. And often, they will be allowed to encroach within their required setback. So, our proposal is to mirror that, that criteria from other communities and mirror it also to what has been more predominant approvals from our zoning board of appeals. And now, we have a request for an amendment that would allow an AC unit or generator in the side yard to project up to six feet into that 16-foot side yard setback. In essence, what's that, that is doing is maintaining a 10-foot green belt and allowing that unit, that ground-mounted mechanical unit, either screened by vegetation or screened by a screen wall, to then encroach within that 16-foot space, but we're limiting it to no more than six feet. We're going a little bit farther and saying that if, that the unit itself could go as far away as six feet, as long as that evergreen planting, and then the evergreen planting could actually encroach into that 10 feet. But if you propose to have a wall, that wall itself would have to be within that six feet and still maintaining that 10-foot green belt. The, the other provision, not necessarily just a side yard, but also in a secondary front yard. And in this instance, we're treating it in a similar fashion, where we're acknowledging, both by our research from other communities and also those that have been heard by our zoning board of appeals, that if it's in that secondary front yard, whether it's in a rear yard to rear, rear yard to frontage orientation, or if it's actually a corner lot, which is this example, that, that generator or AC unit could extend within 10, up to 10 feet into that 40-foot setback. And then, again, in essence, creating a 30-foot green belt that would have to be maintained. Likewise, the screening would have to be from the public view with evergreen screening, and that there'd be maintained that 30-foot green belt along that frontage, similar to the 10-foot green belt that we were insisting on in the side setback. The provision goes further also to speak to non-residential applications. In our commercial areas, we allow them to be immediately adjacent to the building, but intending for it to be located in the rear yard, depending on the size of the commercial property. It may be located in a side yard if it's a, if it's a larger piece of property. But all intents and purposes, we want to make sure that those units are screened with evergreen planting and intending them to be adjacent to the building and not necessarily located within a landscape bed or a parking field. It should be placed next to the building where it's intending to serve. In both of these instances, we're speaking to a reminder, if you will, of our Chapter 14, which is our environmental ordinance that speaks to noise. And so, instead of having a reference just to Chapter 14, we are actually delineating within the ordinance itself that there is a requirement to comply with the minimal decimal requirements of not exceeding 70 dBA in compliance with Chapter 14. And that language is found in this section talking about ground-mounted, but then we go to our new section called wall-mounted. And, you know, this is also known as mini splits, where there are these heating and cooling systems that can be applied, so that they're on the wall, and they generally are intending to control temperature in an individual area. Sometimes, it's more of a, like a four seasons room, or a garage, or, you know, depending on the application that's intended. So, here's a wall-mounted unit that we're suggesting in a single-family, either cluster or residential neighborhoods, or a multiple-family neighborhoods, could be placed on a wall, as long as it is screened from public view with vegetative plantings located at the point of placement. It could be located in the front, excuse me, in the side, rear, or secondary frontage. And here's an example where we received this application, and they identified that it was going to be on a wall-mounted AC unit. It's in a side yard. It is compliant with the setback provisions, and it's screened with evergreen plantings. This same application could very well be found in our non-residential districts, our commercial districts. The same applies. We just want to make sure that no matter how these equipment, where the equipment is being placed, whether it's in the rear of the building, that it needs to be fully screened from public view, and the evergreen plantings, you know, have to be maintained, you know, across the board in all of these applications. So, that concludes the highlights, if you will, of the ordinances that, as we are presenting to you. We did have an opportunity to present this to our zoning board of appeals last week, of which there was support for the language as presented. It was noted that, you know, the language does provide scenarios which would allow a property owner to consider in, you know, their, you know, specific application on their property. It doesn't preclude variances. It just allows for an opportunity for someone who wanted to proceed and go forward, not necessarily having to, you know, take that extra step and having to go to zoning board of appeals. Because we have permission requests as well as dimensional variances, it could very well be that some of our applications for accessory structures comply with all the provisions, but when it's called accessory structure, it has to go to the zoning board of appeals, no matter if it complies or not. We're suggesting that here is at least two elements that we can add to our list now. If it complies with our locational criteria, then it would be, it would not require a permission request, and it would just follow through with a building permit application. Again, if there's any questions about interpretation or application, I mean, every house is unique. You know, every rear yard in orientation is unique. That if there is a question about the application, then we would send it to the zoning board of appeals. You know, if there is not a clear definition or, or, not definition, but a clear application, if you will, or interpretation, we do have that allowance, that we can send those to the zoning board of appeals. So, with that, I'll have to get to the questions.
Anybody have any questions?
No, just a, just a comment that in watching the zoning board last week, it was very timely, because I know there were a number of generator applications that might have fallen within this, and also a couple pergolas, so there was good timing in there. And that was very, it was, it was very useful that you had the, that you described how just because we have this doesn't mean that other applications may not, you know, they still may need to come to the ZBA, depending on, you know, height of the pergola or distance from the home, et cetera. The same with the generator. So, but I think it'd be very useful and save some, you know, make it easier for residents under certain, some of these circumstances.
Even speaking to those circumstances, I think some of you raised a question about, you know, building code compliance, you know. So, depending on placement of some of your utilities in some of the specific applications, it could very well be that they, they can't comply with even the criteria that we're presenting. Or that there has to be, you know, a separate application, not application, but maybe an alternative suggestion based on some specific code requirements related to what's existing or what's proposed as part of a project. So, you know, those nuances are what, you know, our planning division and our building division, you know, is constantly working with our applicants to discern those idiosyncrasies, to make sure that we are following, whether it's a building code compliance, whether it's zoning ordinance, or whether it's a unique circumstance that we have to deliberate as to how best to process this request.
Now, I noticed that you had a building code issue with one of the generators because of the lack of windows.
Yes.
On the closures. So, anyway, and certainly comes in handy, so.
That's very useful.
Good idea that having this opportunity to bring before the planning commission.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions.
I have a point of clarification. The pergola is supposed to be slated, slotted boards, correct?
Yes. You have roof, yes.
What if the homeowner decides that he'd rather have a roof on it that keeps the rain out? It's no longer slatted, but it's open to all sides. Is that a violation of the code, or is that?
It wouldn't be a violation, but it would necessitate them going before the zoning board of appeals.
And presenting that design?
That's correct. That's correct. So, no longer is that a pergola, it's actually a canopy.
Canopy.
Or another accessory structure.
Canopy structured, I guess, or something.
That would have to go to the ZBA.
Or gazebo.
Gazebo. It depends on.
Is that from here out, or is that from here retro?
Going forward.
In other words, when did that come into effect in terms of a builder knowing that, or?
It would be upon adoption and publication of the ordinance, should the township board adopt these ordinances as written.
So, in the past, you'd have to go through the ZBA.
Correct.
Going forward, because it's a pergola with an open structure, according to these setback rules, it would be permitted. The definition of the pergola means that it's open.
Yeah.
Is there any mention of hanging lights or anything?
No.
If there were lights, that would fall into the electrical, right?
Well, it depends on if you're talking about the fun cafe lights or whatever, you know, that's, you know, those are considered landscaping or seasonal or temporary. If it's something a little bit more where it's, has to run electrical and it's hard-mounted, then that would be electrical permit. So, it depends on what you're.
Just as a technicality, so, the mechanical equipment is no longer an accessory structure under this proposal. It becomes part of your site standard, correct?
Correct.
Are the pergola and the fountains accessory structures that are permitted, or they don't, or they can't be called accessory structures anymore?
Yeah, they are accessory structures.
That are permitted.
But they're permitted, based on these elements that are found within the patio and rear.
And then, the only other question is, because we talked about it at the last meeting, this is only for patios on grade. So, if somebody has a deck, like, like mine, it's very low, is there any minimum, like if it's only 12 inches above, is it still?
Grade is grade.
So, that means it would require variance, unless it's a patio.
Okay. Just one question for definition. The distance, the setback, the 40-foot setback, where does that start? Does it start at the right-of-way or at the street, on a secondary frontage?
It's the property line.
Which is the right-of-way, which is about 15 or 18, 17, depending on where.
Depending on.
Feet on the curb.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Right-of-way and property line are not always the same.
No, I know that.
Correct.
So, right, yeah, right-of-way is.
Right-of-way and property line are not always the same.
It's the property line.
So, you measure from the property line.
Sometimes, they're synonymous, sometimes they're not.
Wait, but the right-of-way ends, the property begins?
We have some very unique.
Really?
Legal descriptions that actually property lines will go to the center line of a street. So, until the road commission or MDOT has acquired that legally, of which, you know, the legal description has changed. But we look upon that as what is the, what's the intended, because it either says existing or the intended right-of-way.
Okay.
Is then what we measure from our front, what the front lot line is.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just had one. He asked a question about the adjacent terrace or patio. There is a definition about its height, isn't there? From grade?
14 feet.
No, that's the.
There's a maximum height.
Well, with the pergola.
Not the pergola. Just the patio. I thought there was a grade reference to patio. Maybe it was already established, and I'm not getting it here.
No, it's not, not within the zoning ordinance.
So, the only definition with the patio is on grade?
Right. Right. And there, and there'd be an interpretation by, you know, the, the plan reviewer, you know, depending on, you know, that slab, you know, depending on how, is it a slab? Is it a poured slab? Is it?
Dry laid.
Dry laid, yes. You know, is there some sort of edging that's adjacent to it? Is it brick, is it defined by a brick ledge, you know, within that flat patio? So, is, are there inches? Yes, of course. It's not intended to be, but it's not to extent where it can be raised. So, we refer to a raised patio, because that would not be a patio that we're referring to.
Sometimes, I've torn out decks for people that are shallow like mine. Mine is actually less than, call it 12 inches, just for discussion. And the people say, "I'm tired of this wood deck. I want to put concrete," but they want it at the same height, so they do exactly what you said, or Mr. Kelly said, where they put stackable, dry-laid bricks, fill it, fill the grade up, and then pour the four-inch slab usually, unless it's pavers on top of that. So, it's technically on grade, but I don't know if there's a definition that says, because I've seen people raise them up five feet, too. It's a patio on grade, but that's not anybody's intent. So, is there an intent that if we do put some, a couple courses of brick and pour a patio, that it could be considered patio on grade within X inches? Do we need to worry about defining it?
I think it's going to be, depending on your specific circumstance, because I don't know where your finished floor is as well. And there may be some provisions, and I'm not an expert in the building code, but there could be maybe some relevant provisions of the building code that would apply, relevant to your, where you're walking out or a step. We'd have to look at your particular circumstance.
Well, it's not real, it's, I'm not planning to change mine. I'm just, if people come in, I just want to know how to answer them. If somebody says, "So, right now, when I step out of my house, I step down four inches to my wood deck. And then, from the deck to the grade, the grass, it's 12 inches plus or, you know, just call it 12. It might be 10, it might be 11." So, if somebody said, "Well, I'm only coming up a foot, but it's still on grade," because I had, I had an issue in West Bloomfield where it was way up in the air, but they said if you, if it's, if it's on grade, it's on grade. It's like, okay. It's like, can't you take S for an answer?
I mean, that's the, at this point, not having that opportunity to look at your specific circumstances, grade is at grade. And what that means as far as a particular application, where two-thirds of it is at grade, but because of the topography, there's a little bit of a lip, if you will, on one edge. There would have to be, upon the review, plan review, there'd be determination as that is the, is the intent and the, is the, is the, your proposal principally complying with the provisions of the ordinance.
And I think in general, too, to speak to that, it's like, we're really going to be looking at the overall height as well. You know, I mean, it's really got to come in at 14 feet or less. So, if you start getting in a situation, we have a 14-foot pergola, but then you're building an upper foot or two, now you've got.
I see what you're saying.
A situation.
If somebody came up a foot and held it to 12, then you might consider it still less than.
Yeah.
I got it. That's a good way of looking at it.
Well, the only thing is, if you're building a patio on grade, there's no permitting for it. Not like a deck, where you build it. Now, somebody which built, say they're putting pavers in, but they build a, let's call it a little retaining wall or something, this high around the whole thing, fill it with dirt, fill it, and then do pavers, this, under the assumption that it's a patio on grade, there's no permitting, so there's nothing to be looked at. Maybe the pergola would be. Okay, got that. But not the patio itself. So, I think to go on, to extend what you're saying, is supposing I build that, I, what it's, I fill it with dirt, make it this, you know, this high above, above grade, above the ground, fill it with dirt, put a, pavers in there. How do you interpret that?
Well, it's existing grade, not an artificial.
Okay, so, it would be down at the ground below what I build is where it would have to be, and if it's up there, then it becomes, then it becomes.
Raised patio.
You have to permit it, and you have to get it.
And you'd have to get a permit for a raised patio.
Is a ra, a raised patio in your, in the ordinance?
We don't have that definition of raised patio, but our building official and plan reviewers have looked upon raised patios as a, as a permital, permittedable element, and they'd have to seek a building permit for it.
Are there restrictions in the ordinance and planning for what that comprises?
No.
I came tonight to talk about this very issue, because it's, each community does it differently. West Bloomfield, by the way, is four feet. So, there's nothing in ours that talks about that law.
That's correct. The ordinance, current ordinance is speaking to a very flat, well, here's an example, you know, a flat patio where it is at grade. Those that are not regulated, those have not, you know, what we typically see is a flat sidewalk or so forth. And that was the whole purpose, I think, of the ordinance back in the 70s, is that it's looking at those patios in the backyard, and as long as it was adjacent to your, your rear yard, then it was considered, you know, the exception, and it was allowable. They just didn't, at the time, they didn't want to have anything then built upon that patio. So, now, you're expanding the living area potentially, because it even speaks to, you can't have a roofed-over area, a roofed-over structure on a patio that's in your rear yard. And that's original language to our zoning ordinance. So, we're trying to keep that spirit in that if you're, do want to add that additional living area where it's a, it's a roofed-over area, that, that's something that has to be reviewed by the zoning board of appeals. And so, going back to that, that whole idea about a flat patio is because it has not been a improvement to a property that requires a building permit. Not even to the extent of, you know, stormwater runoff and so forth, that's not looked upon on a, on patio or flat work, if you will. But at the, at the same time, you know, it depends on, is there anything else that's being incorporated into that patio? And now, we're starting to see the, the number of ZBA applications where it is looked upon.
Sure, they had a celebration when you presented it to them.
I mean, it's like, wow, there's a lot of intent to have additional living area in our rear yards, although maybe three months of the year, but, you know, so we're getting these kitchenettes and these barbecues and these, you know, seat walls and, and I think it was just looking at what is the overall intent of, you know, these patios, and it's not necessarily, again, wanting to have any impact on adjoining property. And that's why we're always speaking to evergreen plantings and shrubbery, because we don't want these extra outdoor living areas to be a nuisance to our adjoining neighbors. So, when it's flat and there's something that can be defined and controlled, we're a little bit more comfortable presenting a at-right permissible feature than having everything go to the ZBA.
We have an example, I have an example right near us, my, my house, where someone at the house, a new house, was built up under coat, everything was fine, so, and the backyard slopes down. What they did was they, from the back, they built flat out. They filled it, so that from the back, it goes flat out, and in the winter, they put an ice rink in the back, and underneath that is a patio. Now, that patio at the back is this high, I mean, it's pretty high, but it goes right to the house.
Sure.
So, now, that would be considered at grade, because it's a grade right at the house, but not out at the backyard. Is that what you would think?
Well, we have topography, as long as it's existing topography, if someone is actually altering and potentially filling.
They did, right.
Or altering their, their grade, then that's something that we're going to want to permit.
Yeah, okay.
And we're going to want to take a look at, because now, you're also infecting stormwater runoff.
That's, that's another thing, right.
Yeah. And so, that's not where. And so that's not where this is going. It's actually just looking at what you could put on top of that patio, not necessarily the construction of the patio.
Yeah, what the patio is.
Or what the patio is.
Yeah.
So you're, very good discussion, I appreciate that. You're kind of digging into the weeds a little bit, but yeah. This is not intended to add all the nuances of patios, raised patios, and so forth.
Well.
Okay.
Yeah, so I applaud the idea. I'm all about permitted uses within some confines of definition which you've done. And I think that it's appropriately sized in terms of setbacks and scale. And the quantity of items, the kitchenettes and barbecues and those things are all part of the conversation. And I agree, and I agree with the pergolas, and I agree with the height of the pergola. I think the gap is this definition of the terraces and the patios on grade. Whether you choose to address it or not, to me, I would address it, and I would say something of, something more than 16 inches or a foot, or whatever it is. Unless it's a fill or an existing condition that presents it out into the, into the property, and it has some variability to it other than that. Because I think you're going to get play. Nobody in new construction is going to put it right on grade. It's a, it's a new grade established, there's a certain amount of things we want to do to protect against water intrusion to the building and where we want the water to run, and that sort of thing. So that's just the gap I see in the, in the application.
That would be in a different ordinance. What we're talking about is simply the pergola is on top of whatever we decide in another ordinance, another day, what those patios are.
Well.
Well, that could be, as, you know, something for us to look at, at our next wave.
Yeah.
Of amendments. Or, you know, just for the fact that it might not be an application relevant to going to the zoning board of appeals. You know, so we're not precluding someone having raised patios. And, you know, to Andrea's point, and if you wanted a pergola on your raised patio, then we have to make sure that you're not, because we measure from grade. So now we wouldn't be measuring from the grade surface, but we'd be measured from the, or the, the original grade is where we would measure from, and not the elevated grade, because we want to make sure it's 14 feet from the top of the pergola to the established grade. So it's not precluding any of those scenarios. It's just a matter of some will be funnelled to the ZBA and some would not.
Yeah, I thought the at-grade was defined in here, but it's not. It's just the immediacy.
All right, we all, this is a public hearing, so we need to open up, I don't, there's nobody here. We still have to open up a public hearing. And since there's nobody here to speak to it, then we can close the public hearing, right? And bring it back here for any other comments before we. I have a couple, but, anybody? The only, the only thing I want to bring up, and I, I think this is great. I, I support it. I think that's great. But I do have a couple of comments. One, when I first got onto this planning commission, probably close to 20 years ago, I think, one of the first things I wanted to do, and we've done it, is to put definitions in our ordinances and make it clear so people know what, what things were. Prior to this, I remember going and saying, can we do this? And the planning department, they say, well, show us what is, we'll decide. Okay, well, why don't you, tell me what I need to do? Well, bring it in, we'll decide. That was, happened, and I've seen it in the 40 years I've lived here. I've seen that happen. And now there's good definitions. And the one thing, one of the things that I want to comment is on is that the term adjacent is not defined. I know, I know that you're going to look and say, yeah, it's, you know, this, you know, close, close, it's good enough. But I, I just think that the term adjacent should be defined, okay? The other thing that, that I want to comment is on, since this, the, those, the appliances or the electrical, the, what do you call it?
Generators?
Ground mounted.
Ground mounted, yeah, apparat, that stuff doesn't go to the ZBA. If someone wants to put a, let's, I want to talk about a generator for a specific reason. They put it, they want to put it, and they can encroach six feet into the, the 16-feet setback. And then someone has their bedroom window right next to that generator, and in the summer, there's a power failure, they open their windows, and they put the generator on, and all they hear all night is that generator running. But they have no, no opportunity under this to comment that it's too close to my window. It's too close to me. Just to comment, don't have to, we don't have to go anyplace. I just think that those things, those two things, I have, I have an issue with a little bit, but I'm going to still support, I think this is, this is fine. I just wanted to get it, put it out there.
A window for the neighbor or your own window?
No, the neighbor's window. You want to put it under your own window, your own bedroom, that's your business. But if you want to put it next to my window, and in the summer, it's right there, and the, and the generator goes on, my window's open, and I got to hear it all night, well, I might not like that.
Might need a generator.
What? I might need a generator. I don't have the $20,000 to buy one either.
Well, what helps in that instance is that we just have neighborhood architectural control committees or architectural review committees, where when somebody wants to do some improvement to their property, it has to go through the subdivision ordinance building committee, of which maybe there could be a dialogue or discussion to that end.
Well, I'm very familiar with that. Absolutely, I'm familiar with that. The problem is, though, in that area, which is not a problem, but the fact is that the building department, the permitting, does not have to listen to that at all. They do. They do. But they could say, nah, not so much this time, we're going to approve it and give you a building permit. And, and even though the homeowner association is up in arms about it, they're not, the building department is not bound to go by it. I get that. But they do, and they ask us all the time. But nevertheless, okay.
I, I think it's a valid point.
I, I like the idea it's controlled by the decibels. I mean, there could be a generator that's 10 feet away that's quieter than one that's 40 feet away. So the decibels, to me, is a, is a big deal.
Okay. And it is shielded, too, which helps, you know, the, if you put evergreens in front of it, it helps a lot.
Enersper fire.
Yeah, I know.
And almost no matter where you put that generator, your neighbor's going to hear it at some point.
Well, none of it's in the backyard, where it's, you got 80 feet between them and the neighbor, you know, big backyard. It could be put perhaps another place, but no, that's fine. I just want to get that on the.
Sometimes it could only be put on the side.
That's true. That is true. And that's why, and under the old ordinance, you could get a variance for practical difficulty or hardship, because it couldn't go in the backyard, had to go on the side.
Yeah.
So, okay. Any other? Okay, then.
Yeah, I'd just comment that the, the generators of today are a little bit softer than the ones from yesterday. You know, the sound transmission and the style of installation is, in my limited experience of my neighborhood, totally different than the ones that were put in 15 years ago. Terms of noise.
I just got a replacement, because mine went bad, and it's twice the size and half is noisy.
Yeah.
Make a motion that positive recommendation onto the board for consideration.
Support.
Seconded, anybody? Oh, she seconded, okay. Any other discussion then on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the opposed. Okay, very good.
Excellent discussion.
Okay, next item is the draft of the 22, 2022 planning annual report.
So tonight, we are presenting your 2022 annual report. This could not have been completed without the dedicated help by Kelly Jacobson. And certainly, we appreciate all of her efforts in putting this together, as she has in previous years. You'll, the planning report is a compilation of not just the planning commission activities, but also involves the design review board and the zoning board of appeals. And really, it's a relate, it's a summation of all the planning-related applications in business that, that's been conducted over the year. So, you know, through the course of breaking down our different applications, doing comparisons from previous years, and even having the attendance record in the back, we clearly are ramping up, if you will. There was a significant impact to the planning applications for the planning commission because of COVID, and then shortly thereafter, just the ability to get plans to a point where we actually can present it to you. We're now seeing more, more site plans now being ready to be presented in our going forward. So the planning commission was a little bit lagging compared to the zoning board of appeals and design review board. But as someone said, we're starting to meet, you know, on a regular basis and once or twice a month again. So, you know, we are seeing a change to that effect. But overall, we have a busy planning division, and we expect that, that same level of activity for the next year, for 2023.
Excellent, yep. Anybody have anything on that?
Why is it a draft?
Do we have that?
Is to go somewhere else?
Yeah, this needs to be.
Moved and.
Presented and then moved to the township board to be presented as part of your compliance with your bylaws. Because you're annually, you are required to prepare a annual report, present it to the township board. As long as we can produce that in the next month to the township board, then we're in compliance.
Okay, then we need a motion, then, somebody?
I'll move that if it's completed and supervised and overlooked and approved, to move approval to the board.
Second down there, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any items that are not on the agenda, anyone who wants to bring up? Okay, then, next planning commission meeting is Monday, March 8th.
Yes.
And I think you, we have something on that, right?
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
There we go, another one. I do like that.
A winner.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good meeting, thank you.